Order. And first item is roll call. All other persons are present. We have Bemke, Kubaschak, Zarflue, Katna, or, sorry, Dean Veneman and Scott Kellogg present in the chambers. And we have Mr. Raome and Jake Katna via Zoom or phone. Steve Coath has had an emergency in another county. He called me this afternoon, so he is excused, and he is on his way there. So our next item is Pledge of Allegiance and Silent Prayer in lieu of invocation.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of the free and sane, one, under God, individual, with the repeating justice for all.
Justice.
Amen. Okay, let's get down to business. I want to thank the clerk and city attorney for the festive tree behind me, and I have a back hole next to my name tag with gifts in it. I think that's in honor of Digger Dan at the street department. Thank you. So a little festive honor December council meeting. Our next item is the reading of the minutes of the minutes previous meetings held on, previous meeting held on November 17th. And what are your wishes? So we have a motion by Kubaschak. Button for second. Second by Mr. Kellogg. Any further discussion?
If anything deals with me, then I'll object. I agree with it unless it has to do with me, so.
I don't think, I don't think Mr. Raome, there's anything in there regarding you.
Okay. All right.
So seeing no other discussion, please cast your ballots. Thank you. Tom, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Jake, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carried, seven a's, zero nays. Our next item is a presentation of American Public Works Award Association Project of the Year Award, recognizing excellence for the Westside Pumping Station Force Main Replacement Project. Mr. Terry.
Thank you. Going to attempt to share my screen. Can everybody see that?
And we see it.
Okay, great. So thank you. This is a unique opportunity. The City of Wisconsin Rapids has been nominated and awarded the American Public Works Association Project of the Year for the Westside Pumping Station Force Main Replacement Project along with our partners, Strand Associates and A1 Excavating. There is only one of these projects prestigiously recognized annually, so I'd like to share a little of the project background and some of the reasons why the city received the award. Wisconsin Rapids, as everyone knows, is bisected by the Wisconsin River with the wastewater treatment plant on the east side. Moving wastewater that serves Westside residents, commercial businesses, the Westside Industrial Park, and the building Rudolph to the treatment plant requires a pumping station and pipeline to get it across the river. Back in 1940, the city constructed its first wastewater treatment plant. The mechanical building for that plant is the brick building on the right in the photo that you can see on your screen. That facility served the city until after a new treatment plant was built on the east side in 1970. From 1970 to 1973, both plants treated wastewater, and in 73, a pipeline was needed to move the wastewater from the west side to the east side, so one was built by dredging and burying a special type of pipe under the river. This pipe was a composite construction of metal and concrete and was protected from corrosion by an impressed current cathodic protection system. The reason I'm mentioning this is important and will become evident a little bit later. The old plant was decommissioned from treatment, then and converted to a pumping station once the new force main was complete in 1973. By 2015, the Westside Pumping Station was at the end of its useful life. Pumps and motors had failed, corrosion was evident, access to pump screens and the wet well had inherent dangers and required careful monitoring to keep staffs safe, and the building itself had deteriorated. Now normally, a pipeline constructed in 1973 would be expected to last much longer than 40 to 50 years. However, city staff were aware this particular type of pipe at this age had failed in other applications nationwide, so we decided to consider inspecting and possibly rehabilitating or replacing it. The importance of the force main cannot be overstated. It's vital to the health, well-being, and economics of the city, and the city's city staff's acute awareness of the type of pipe, its demonstrated lifespan, and proactive foresight likely save the city from experiencing a major environmental and economic disaster. This photo shows the pump station location at the upper left, the existing force main in dark yellow in the middle of the screen crossing the island, the proposed relocation for a dredge installation in purple, and proposed relocation for directional boring installation in red. City staff explored efforts to inspect the existing force main. Inspection would require extensive planning and an expense of over a quarter of a million dollars. Given the failures of this type of pipe elsewhere, and after much internal discussion and debate, it was decided that the likelihood of really learning anything of great value would not be worth the inspection cost, so planning began to design a replacement force main system and evaluate rehabilitation or replacement of the pumping station. Because of the complexity of construction of a force main across a major water body, the method of construction chosen had a major impact on the overall project cost. Therefore, the method of force main installation was a major topic throughout the facility plan and into the design phase of the project. The city hired Strand Associates to help develop a master plan, design, and oversee construction, and the two most logical methods we considered were horizontal directional drilling and dredging. Horizontal directional drilling is a trenchless utility installation method that has minimal impact to the surface above. To begin the process, a pilot boring is drilled through, through the ground from an entrance pit to an exit pit, and then once the pilot hole is complete, a larger reaming pit is used to enlarge the hole to the final size, in this case, 30 inches, to accommodate a 20-inch pipe. The pipe is then pulled through the bore hole all in one piece to maintain the integrity of the pipe and the bore. As a result, the entire length of pipe must be laid out and welded beforehand. In contrast, dredging is an excavation operation usually carried out underwater to relocate bottom sediment. Dredging would be utilized to create a uniform trench along the riverbed in order to install the new force main. In this method, once the trench is formed, the pipe is pulled across the surface of the water until it spans the entire width of the crossing, and then the pipe is slowly filled with water and sunk into the previously formed trench. Once settled on the bottom, the pipe is covered with stone to protect it, and this is the method that was used to construct the original force main across the river. Some preliminary estimates indicated that drilling would cost around 4.6 million and dredging 3.9, so as a result, the facility plan initially called for dredging. As we proceeded into the design process, city staff were close to with Strand. In addition to costs, there are other things that needed to be considered, such as environmental impact, sustainability, and public impact. In an attempt to qualify those criterias, the city chose to spend $100,000 to perform a geological study of the bottom and the makeup of the riverbed underneath. City engineering staff worked with its survey equipment supplier to rent some precision GPS depth sounding equipment and conducted a topographical survey of the bottom portion of the river, and then the city contracted with a geological engineer and construction company to obtain the soil borings. Coincidentally, the construction company that provided the barges was actually the prime contractor when the original river crossing was installed in 73. Once the geological survey was complete, we worked with contractors to obtain an updated opinion of cost. Because the rock under the river was found to be uniform and horizontal drilling is easier and consistent material, the cost estimate for that was revised and lowered from 4.6 million to 2.9, making it the economic method of choice and ultimately the method of construction design. Once methods were determined, we needed to develop a construction financial plan. The city studied the benefits of using the Wisconsin Clean Water Fund program, and this program is a state revolving loan fund that provides reduced interest rate loans to municipalities for wastewater projects such as these. The city's loan had an interest rate of 1.87%, but more importantly, the city also received $700,000 of principal forgiveness based on resident income criteria. So the evaluation of alternatives by the city and the information learned from the geological study really saved the city approximately $2.8 million in construction permitting and debt service costs, and this is one of the, again, one of the elements that was considered in the award. There were numerous unique challenges with the design and construction of this project. In order to get the DNR permits to drill the test holes in the river, the DNR needed proof of ownership of the riverbed where the borings would take place, and there are several instances along the river and other areas in the region that suggest that portions of the riverbed may be privately owned. Discussions with DNR staff and reviewing various permits just weren't conclusive. City staff investigated land records, and while we didn't believe the riverbed was privately owned, we didn't find anything to absolutely prove it to satisfy the DNR. Finally, upon further legal review in the Wisconsin Constitution, it states in part, "The river Mississippi and navigable waterways leading to the Mississippi and St. Lawrence and the carrying places between the same shall be common highways and forever free." So collectively, the information implied that the state is the trustee of the waters in the area of the project, and as a result, the DNR allowed the project to be permitted. Throughout the project, the city consulting engineering contractor worked hard to maintain a commitment to sustainability and collaboration. In addition to the environmental and economic sustainability presented by the construction method and the pipe used, another was through creative reuse of waste material from the drilling process to install the new force main across the river. In the drilling process, a bentonite clay is mixed with water to create slurry, and that slurry is pumped to the drilling borehead during drilling. That slurry then helps lubricate the borehead, and it forces the rock and soils back out of the borehole into a slurry pit. On this project, that slurry was recycled through a separator shown in the photo that you see on the screen, and that segregated the rock and larger debris from the slurry so that the slurry could be reused, and that saved thousands of pounds of bentonite slurry from having to be disposed of. Upon completion of the drilling across the river, the contractor was left with about 40,000 gallons of slurry. The contractor and the city worked together to build 150 by 200-foot area with a berm in the city's material stockpile yard to place and store the muddy slurry in order to dry it. Once dry, it was mixed with other backfill material to be used as spilt for other and future city construction sites. If not for this collaborative effort, the material would have been landfill, wasting landfill space and costing landfill fees. A significant project challenge was making the transition from the old force main to the new one with as little disruption to service as possible. Plans were discussed and refined for over a month on how to shut down the pumping plant, drain the old force main, cut in the new one, and relocate a portion of the existing storm sewer adjacent to the force main on the, on the east side, all while being able to manage up to 6,000 gallons per minute flowing into the old lift station. To put that in perspective, 6,000 gallons a minute is equivalent of over 3,500 toilets flushing every minute. It was decided cutting in the connection would only occur if there had been dry weather leading up to and continuing through the work, and the connection would also take place overnight when flows would be the lowest. The contractor provided, provided a detailed outline of the anticipated schedule, labor, equipment, pumps, backup generator, and coordination with city staff needed throughout the operation. Contractor would operate a submersible pump, and then a backup pump would be available that could individually handle flows for complete redundancy. The contractor had four tanker trucks at the pumping station intercepting the incoming sanitary sewer flow and then transporting it by a 30-minute round trip to the wastewater treatment plant. Two additional tanker trucks were on standby if flows got too great, but they were never needed. Most of the existing force main needed to be drained back to the pump station to allow for the connection to be made. We calculated this would take approximately two hours. The contractor had also most of the 20-inch pipe and valves preassembled above ground so the assemblies could be lowered in place and the connection made as quickly as possible, and part of that assembly is what's shown in the photo on your screen. In advance of the cutover, city staff met with high-use industrial customers to coordinate and attempt to try to reduce flows during the shutdown and connection, and in the hours immediately before the connection work began, city staff pumped down all of the Westside sanitary lift wet wells and the lift stations to well for as much system capacity as possible. And then staff, city staff remained on hand and available as needed all night long to assist in the operation and support the transition work. The force main was shut down at 6:00 PM on July 17th of 2018. During this period, city staff closely monitored sanitary sewer flows. Instead of two hours for the force main to drain back though, it took seven hours, and it was later discovered that a blockage was actually an unknown check valve that was partly closed. By 1:00 AM, the actual cutover commenced, and by 6:30 AM the next morning, the connection was complete and the force main placed back into service. So even with the five extra hours needed because of that drawdown delay, the plan was executed perfectly, and there were no service disruptions. The extensive planning and coordination that went into this extremely important milestone was completed successfully without the public even knowing that a critical portion, portion of the city's infrastructure had been taken out of service for almost 12 hours. The potential for adverse economic and environmental impacts varied based on the method of construction chosen, and as I mentioned earlier, the original facility's plans from 2015 recommended installing the force main using an open-cut dredge across the riverbed. That method would have resulted in some potential environmental impacts that really would have been challenging to avoid. The horizontal boring, however, eliminated nearly all environmental risk. The potential to affect the riverbed sediment, the habitats, the bald eagle nest, red-shouldered hawk, carnivore butterfly, and the dry mesic forest on Garrison Island were all avoided. Also avoided was an architectural or an archaeological site on the west side of the river and some wetland impacts on the east side of the river. There would have also been some impacts to private property easements where the old force main exists that were, that were avoided. The photo on the top left is, is some of the boring work. The bottom left is private property that would have been significantly affected had the dredging operation taken place, and the photo on the right is the pipeline being welded in preparation and being poured, pulled through the borehole. The city had initially planned to construct the lift station in 2018 and the force main in 2019. During maintenance of the cathodic protection system in 2017, staff recognized some electrical issues that indicated signs of pending failure with the old pipe. So staff then recommended advancing the force main project 2018. So having the design and specification work done proactively allowed the bidding and construction of the force main to be advanced one year and potentially avoided a significant environmental incident. So all in all, this project was designed, constructed with an absolute minimum of any negative environmental impacts. The culmination of planning, city council support, environmental considerations, and outstanding collaboration within the project team resulted in a successful project worth recognition by public works professionals nationwide. I'm proud to have worked with our staff, consultants, contractors, and stakeholders on this significant city public service project. It's a very special honor to have our own work in Wisconsin Rapids recognized as the best in the country. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Terry. I also want to extend my congratulations out to the Public Works Department for their work and for obtaining this Project of the Year Award. Okay, next item on the agenda is consideration, Consider a Resolution Extended Emergency Declaration Proclamation Regarding COVID-19 Pandemic. See item two. I emailed all of you just so you were, had a heads up and you're made aware of the item I added in there or had added in there regarding appearing by committee and council meeting with video on, so just want to make that known again. What are your wishes?
I'll move to continue the emergency declaration.
We have a motion by Zarflue, second by Veneman. Any discussion?
Just for clarification, that with the change to the...
Your mic isn't on.
I'm sorry. Mr. Zarflue, is that, are you making a motion to include the changes to the language that were added to that?
Yes, and that would be my intent, as the mayor determines.
Seeing none, please cast your ballots. Tom, how do you wish to vote? Tom, your mic is muted. I'm not sure if you're aware of that. Are we having audio problems at all? Joe, can you still hear us?
Yeah. Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can.
So just so Mr. Raome knows as well, we all got muted by the host, so.
Okay. We good? Tyler?
Fine.
We're fine on our end.
Yeah, we just, it just notified us all we got muted, and we couldn't unmute without the host's permission, so.
Oh, you're on a phone, so, okay. So Jake, how do you wish to vote? Or do you have any, did you have discussion probably?
I'll, I'm in favor of keeping the emergency declaration. I don't see a need to have the video included, so I'm going to vote in aye on, in this one.
So do you put them for abstaining, Tom? Tom, just one more time. I just want to make sure that you, you're muted and just want to see if you want to vote. So motion carried, five a's, one nay, one abstention. Next item up for is introduction by Alder Person Joe Zarflue of a resolution to censure Alder Person Tom Raome regarding Alder Person Raome's conduct at the November 17, 2020 council meeting. Mr. Zarflue?
Thank you. I'll read the resolution first. Attorney Schill?
Okay.
It's dated today by the Common Council of the City of Wisconsin Rapids, whereas, as the cornerstone of democracy, Americans have observed certain rules of behavior generally to act in an impartial and responsible manner so that all members of the public have confidence in the integrity of its government, and whereas, displays of anger, rudeness, ridicule, profane language, impatience, a lack of respect, and personal attacks detract from the open exchange of ideas, prevent open discussion of the issues, and can discourage individuals from their participation in government. And whereas, public officials hold office for the benefit of the public and are bound to discharge faithfully the duties of their office regardless of personal consideration and must recognize that the public interest must be their prime concern. And whereas, Robert's Rules of Order provides that a member must confine himself to the question before the assembly and refrain from disorderly words, and whereas, city policies require that all city officials, including Alder Persons, act with respect toward one another and the public. And whereas, city Alder Persons and city staff should be treated with respect, dignity, and appreciation for the hard work and dedication they provide to the city and its citizens. And whereas, the actions of Alder Person Tom Raome at the Common Council meeting of November 17, 2020 violate the terms and spirit of Robert's Rules of Order, City of Wisconsin Rapids' policies, and the general norms of appropriate conduct for a public official. And whereas, Alder Person Raome's actions tend to cast the Wisconsin Rapids Common Council, the City of Wisconsin Rapids as a whole in a negative light. And whereas, Alder Person Raome's actions hinder the Wisconsin Rapids Common Council's ability to conduct business in an orderly and efficient manner. And whereas, the Wisconsin Rapids Common Council deems it necessary to formally censure Alder Person Raome for his actions. Now therefore, be it resolved that Alder Person Raome is formally censured for his actions for the reasons set forth above, and be it further resolved that Alder Person Raome is strongly encouraged to conform his conduct to the spirit and intent of the above rules and policies from this time forward, and be it further resolved that Alder Person Raome is strongly encouraged to publicly apologize to Alder Person Thad Kubaschak for the inappropriate comments directed at him, and to publicly apologize to the Common Council and the citizens of Wisconsin Rapids for his inappropriate conduct during the Common Council meeting. The reason I requested the resolution was, there's a common theme that we've all been seeing over the past several months, and whatever the reasons are, I don't want to make this about the individual, but about the behavior. Last meeting, a noticed agenda item was in the process of being discussed by persons who were recognized to present it. They were interrupted, and it was very obvious that there was plenty of that presentation left to go around, so they never even finished it. I heard profanity, specifically the F-word, used two different times. Another word that, if not profane, is definitely inappropriate, used a different third time. Alder Person Kubaschak was interrupted when he was noticed and he had the floor. This behavior is unbecoming of a public official. It's okay to be passionate about the issues. It's okay to call a point of order, but not to the point where you're disorderly and engaged in an argument. The point of order needs to be recognized by the person chairing the meeting, ruled upon, and then you go about your business. I said last meeting that the behavior was embarrassing, and I hope it stops, and this action is, at least mine, I'm going to vote in favor of the resolution, obviously, that I'm not going to sit by and tolerate that kind of behavior, and that's all I have to say about that issue. Thank you.
Anybody wish to make a motion?
For the interruption, can public make a comment?
I will, Steve, I'll, once we get a motion down, then I'll, I'll call for discussion.
I'll make the motion to move forward with the censorship.
So we have a motion and a second. Does anyone wish to comment? I know Steve does, if anybody wants to recognize him.
I'll, I'll recognize him.
Go ahead, Steve.
Hello, my name is Steve Abrahamson, and I would like to address agenda number seven. I watched the... I watched a video of the actions taken by two council members on November 17, 2020. The topic at hand was the Water Works and Lighting Commission issue, and Thad Kubisak has the floor. Thad went into his spiel talking about elections having consequences and brought up the seats open for the spring, upcoming spring election, which includes his own. So person could actually construe that as being campaigning on the council floor. So Tom Raome called for a point of order, which was largely ignored. Thad then continued with his suspected campaigning on the council floor, causing Mr. Raome to lose control. This caused Thad to lose his train of thought, but on the hot mic, Thad made a statement about Tom Raome's well-being and wondering if he should do a welfare check call. This is very unbecoming of somebody who holds the title of council president. Once I found out about this resolution, I called and talked to a few council members, and here's what I came up with from those conversations. One, the issue of Mr. Raome's actions had been ongoing for quite some time, and there was no action taken at those times, so the precedent has been set that this is acceptable behavior. Two, Thad is also known for being quite demeaning to other council members. Three, council should not be doing, doing out punishments as a public spectacle. This issue should be done behind closed doors. Four, if you're going to censure one, you have to censure both parties. As I've wondered, or Mr. Raome's actions in the past have set a precedent that it is acceptable for the good reason that it was not addressed in the past. So here's my take on the whole situation. If you continue to censuring Mr. Raome, I want to see two motions, two seconds, and a yes vote for, one, censuring Mr. Kubisak, two, stripping Mr. Kubisak of his title for reasons of conduct unbecoming a council president. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any further, any other discussion? Seeing none. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
It, it was very difficult for me to even request this action. I don't want to make it a public spectacle, unfortunately, as I understand, we are required to because of open meeting laws, and I can't speak to the other points made, but this is in no way, I had no intention of going after an individual, but simply to just make the behavior stop. Unfortunately, as a, as a, as a council member, as part of the whole body, I can only do it this way, so I just wanted to address that one point.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none. Yes, Mr. Raome, do you want to say anything? Okay.
The way, the way, the way it is, I, the way it is, I probably shouldn't, but, uh, there was a point of order that was asked that evening, it was not addressed, and also I also have to say that this past Tuesday, at a meeting, two meetings, I addressed again a couple of point of orders, totally brushed aside by the president of the city council, who had not been wanting to hear from me at all, so, and that is the fact, it's on the record, it's there. He doesn't want to listen to me because, you know what? We disagree on things, and I respect that, but he doesn't respect that somebody can disagree with him. Tuesday night, I had at least two points of orders totally brushed aside, totally brushed aside by the chairman of the city council. He thinks he can run the show? He thinks he's boss hog? And with that, I'll let it go because let me tell you, I think I was innocent the other night, and let me tell you, if this goes further, there's gonna be lawyers he stands upon the city, let me tell you. So let me tell you, do what you want to do to vote. If I have a chance, if I can vote, even though I'm accused, if I can vote, I will vote, but I'm accused, so maybe somebody can say I can't vote, so.
Nope, I plan on asking you.
And there was, and there was no, no intent, no intent that if, if there were some words that were said that weren't, people didn't like, that I take them back. Argument was there, I stand by what the argument was. I stand by what the argument was. That you can't take away from me. If some people didn't like the words I used, they watch them on TV all the time, you go to the movies and watch them all the time. So don't tell me you're offended by it now. You sit and watch it all the time. But I stand by the actions, the decision that I was trying to prove that evening, that is what the issue should be. That's what it should be. But if they, if people didn't like that, I apologize for using the words, if they didn't like that. That I'll do, but I stand by the action of what I was trying to prove that evening.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. Tom, how do you vote?
I know, that's against the resolution to make sure the votes right, more against the resolutions.
Okay. And Jake, how do you vote?
Uh, your honor, I'm gonna abstain from this.
Okay. So the motion carries five As, one Nay, one abstention. Motion carries. So Tom, you have been, um, so the motion has passed, the mayor, and you have been censured by the city council, Tom, and this censure indicates the council's disapproval of your conduct at the meeting. A censure is just, is, this is a warning, we just hope that you govern yourself accordingly in the future, and we welcome your participation, though. Let's move on to the next item, which is item eight, consider approval and ordinance revising section 8.20, table one, schedule of the sewer charges contained in chapter eight, sewage regulation as recommended by the wastewater treatment commission at its meeting on December 2nd. All the persons, you were given a sheet that showed the current and the proposed rates. I believe it, Mr. Terry, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I think it shows a 5% increase, which is about 70 cents.
Yeah, that's correct. It's a 5% increase for the typical residential customer that uses about 5,000 gallons a month. That increase would be about $16.69 per year. There was one decrease, and that was the non-domestic industrial wastewater surcharges for BOD 5. It's the second item in the non-domestic industrial wastewater surcharge column. The realized cost for the special chemicals for that type of treatment, and the process that was used is required of less chemicals and less costs, and so through the analysis that, that's recommended to drop by 5 cents, otherwise it's a 5% increase.
Thank you. Counsel?
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion by Benkey, seconded by Zerflu. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Oh.
Sorry, just one. I was contacted by someone today about this. They had the proposed fees, but written next to them were numbers, made it look like a, like a 45% increase. I don't know where those numbers came from, but they're obviously not accurate. I guess I just want to throw that out there, I don't know who else heard from that, but I got back to that individual and said that I'm looking at the chart right here, and it's, I don't know, those numbers must have been pretty old, I'm not really sure where they came from.
Yeah, so, I'm sorry, I, I saw that also, it was on Facebook, and I believe that person took it down once I sent them the correct current rates. I believe the, it was misinformation they had gotten off, and I think possibly it might have been water rates, minimum kind of things, and it wasn't, but it was misinformation out there that has been corrected, and you do have the current rates with the proposed rates now. Anyone else? Seeing none. Please cast your ballots. Mr. Raome?
Hi.
Uh, Mr. Katna?
Hi.
Thank you, gentlemen. A motion carried seven As, zero Nays. We are to the second reading of an ordinance which would authorize the Water Works and Lighting Commission to place delinquent electric bills as special charges on the property tax roll. You all have the ordinance, there are some people, a few people online on Zoom that wish to address the council again. I'm not sure how you want to handle it this time, or if you want me to go down the line, or how you want to do that. I guess first of all, just, anybody on the council? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Thank you, um, this has been obviously one of the more communicative events since I've been on the council, and had a lot of calls in both ways. Just wanted to say a couple of thoughts that, been looking at this one pretty seriously, talked to a lot of different people about it, and so I was just gonna go through it a little bit real quickly, and then I had a motion I wanted to address. So, some of the pros for either side of this argument are the rates are not raised by citizens and businesses that pay their bills in a timely fashion. The utility would be able to use the trip more effectively on changes in the policy, based on changes in the policy, and landlords could have more control of their revenues by adding utilities to the rent, including utilities with their rent. And some of the cons to this, I, first of all, the responsible bill, bill, excuse me, the responsible party would not be paying the bill, there's less incentive for the WWLC to pursue collections aggressively, landlords would be less inclined to provide rental units as their expenses are increased in an economy that can ill afford to have less affordable rental housing. Payment ban, payment plans and bills do not follow the tenant under the current system. While the WWLC cannot shut down electricity during COVID moratorium, landlords could not evict for non-payment of rent either. And if a tenant leaves the billing, the dwelling with the past due amount and the landlord pays the bill, there is nothing to stop that tenant from getting new service and starting the cycle all over again because someone else paid their bill. And it's also easy for a tenant to work the system, especially during non-disconnect periods, whether for, such as the winter or during the COVID moratorium. So some of the solutions that have come across either way, I'm still on the fence on this issue, to be honest with you, but I am told there is a bill in the, in the state legislature that they're going through, that they're addressing, that would enable a past due electric bill to follow the responsible party to their next rental unit. And another thing is, my understanding is that WWLC is currently in the black. With that in mind, if they have the kind of outstanding balances they have, it would behoove them to make the collections manager a full-time position whose entire responsibility is to aggressively collect via calls, payment plan requirements, et cetera. And then another thing, the landlords on their end could require a security deposit for electric bills. So those are just some of the things. So basically, where I'm at on this, and with the vaccine already being distributed and the end of the pandemic possibly or seemingly within reach, I'd like to make a motion to table this discussion until our April 20th, 21 city council meeting, in which case we are outside the cold weather limitations for disconnect, the moratorium on disconnects for COVID, and evictions for non-payment are possibly lifted, and the state legislator has time to act.
So we have a motion by Veneman, seconded by Zerflu, to table this item. Mr. Kellag?
Water and Light has a budget that is $1 million in debt due to property owners not paying their utility bills. This has occurred-
Not sure if you can hear me, but if you could speak better into the microphone, please.
I got a mask on, I'll try the best I can. I'll start all over. Water and Light has a budget that is $1 million in debt due to property owners not paying their utility bills. This has occurred between 15 and 20 years. This isn't just new, and what has been passed out by Water and Light, so hold it up that you could see it, is a chart that shows the $1 million that Water and Light is in debt because people are not paying their dues. Second, one-third of the landlord properties are not paying their dues, but two-thirds of the landlord properties are. Now why is it that two-thirds of the property owners landlords can pay the bills and one-third can't? I've gotten calls from landlords, there's five landlords, whatever, but I got a slew of calls from property owners that don't want their rates increased because people are not paying their dues. And three, all property owners, there's 12% of all property owners, 12%, landlords and non-landlords. So what we're saying, if we don't pass this, 88% of the property owners will carry the cost of 12% of the owners. And many of the owners in Wisconsin Rapids are on fixed incomes, throughout my whole neighborhood, up and down the block, they're on fixed incomes. And then if you don't pass this, there is no encouragement for people to be conservative in using electricity. They just use it, who cares? And then I get a kick out of, the landlords, or some of them, are saying that the Water and Light is not doing very much, they can do more. They're doing a hell of a lot of things. There's a whole list, I'll hold it up here, but I won't take your time and read them all. But monthly, the landlords are notified of past due amounts of tenants, which include last payment dates, and they send items to Trip to get the money back, they're doing their best. Now, what the Water and Light cannot do is require, the word is require, okay, they can't insist, require, that a social security number or driver's license number is a requirement for service. Two, the disconnect electricity by landlord's request, if a request is to assist in evacuation They cannot collect a deposit from one class of customers, such as all tenants. They cannot refuse service if a customer does not have a past due account or amount. Customers need to resolve previous past due if it is with the Water and Light Commission. And they cannot disconnect at any time, the PSE protocol must- The PSE protocol must follow based on the past due notifications. Now, the other thing that was mentioned, you're saying that the Water and Light is not doing a thing. Well, last Wednesday at the commissions meeting, Lynn Schorer, now you mentioned there should be somebody in charge. Well, she is. She's the customer support supervisor. And in November, just the month of November, there were 284 automated phone calls made to customers who were past due. 284. And the office staff in one month called 550, 550 customers to speak with them directly regarding payment arrangements and energy assistance. Customers did not respond. It was a minimal response. And the other thing, so if we pass this, this is what the landlords can do. Landlords can do this. Landlords can require a separate utility deposit when the person moves in. Landlords can require a tenement to put utility service in their name as a lease requirement. Landlords can require the tenant to stay current on utility bills as part of their lease requirement. Landlords can place service in their tenant's name. And if this is passed, this is what's, this is the solution. If the, if the electric bill on the tax rule ordinance is approved, landlords obtain the ability to request electric disconnection, not during moratoriums, if a tenant is past due on his or her utility bill. So if it's passed, the landlords can say, disconnect it. You know, you don't have to wait for the Water and Light. And the Water and Light is making 550 calls a month. I don't know what more, there's a whole list of things they're doing with TRIP and everything else. And they're making these calls, and they have auto call. I don't understand how we're going to make up the $1 million. Then the other thing is, there's the large employers in the city. These are the largest employers that use electricity. Assign this notice that they want this to be passed. That's Wisconsin Rapids Public School. That's RCH Enterprise. That's Midwest Cold Storage. That's Marinini Packing Company. That's Ocean Spray Cranberries. That's Aspiris. That's Wood County Courthouse. And here we're getting a few landlords calling us, and we're getting these large employers that are saying, pass the thing. And then the thing is, we don't have letters from the small businesses. Think of all the small businesses on 8th Street or throughout the city that are trying to make ends meet, trying to make ends meet. And because a few landlords are saying, oh, we can't, you can't collect it from us, but two-thirds of them can, two-thirds of them are paying for it. I don't see the logic. I do not see the logic. That's my speech. Thanks.
Joe?
I just have a question about tabling it. I don't know who'd be best to answer. My question would be if tabling it until beyond the, well, traditional shut-off period and perhaps beyond the moratorium, if that is going to be detrimental to Water and Light or not? I mean, if it would be the same as maybe not passing it? I'm not sure if anyone's on who can answer that.
Jeff, would you be willing to answer that, or Jim?
Um, I can, I can answer that question. I think, um, I think for planning purposes, it would be beneficial to have a decision tonight, if at all possible.
Thank you. Doug?
My point.
Microphone.
I'll speak loud enough, too. My point is, we're just procrastinating. We're kicking the dog. We're just pushing-
Sorry to interrupt. If you could try to speak a little clearer, I'm not hearing you.
My point is, we're just procrastinating and putting it off. I mean, it's always, can we do this? Can we do this? And do we conelay? Can we delay the COVID and all this? I just listed all the reasons why, and all the major employers, and all the small employers. First of all, Wisconsin Water and Light has a fiduciary responsibility to balance their budget. And Water and Light is us. It's us. It's the common counsel. It's our asset. It's not a separate entity out there. It's us. So we would be, in my opinion, we would not be fiscally responsible if we would, if we do not pass this ordinance and not kick down the road for another time. And guess what? It'll come up, and we'll get more calls from landlords. And these figures that I gave you will not change. In fact, you probably get more calls from, from property owners. They're up and down my block, and they're upset. Why should, why should my electric bill go up? Because a few irresponsible people cannot. And how do I answer that? How do I answer that? Just because five, six, eight, 10 landlords are calling? I don't accept that. While other landlords are paying their bills. Maybe these landlords have to take a course in how to run a business, and how to get better tenants, or how, I don't know, work together as a team to figure it out. But I resent, as a taxpayer, as a property owner, for my tenant, not tenant, my constituents, that rates are going to be raised because a few people cannot pay that bill. Or we, I can't say we not, they refuse to pay the bill. And someone said, well, they're going to eviction and all that. I'm going to have people that aren't tenants that might be evicted if you raise their rate in their house. I mean, everybody's on a tight, and what, talk to these small businesses. Go down the street and talk to the small businesses on 8th Street or throughout the city, and ask them, do you want your rate to be increased? Because a few landlords are calling common counsel, saying, oh, we can't do it. It's a business. It's a profit. They've had this for years, years, 15 years. They wrote it off, they take it off their income tax. It's a business. Well, if you can't handle it, get out of the business. Do something else. Thanks.
Dean?
Yes, I just want to clarify. The reason I don't consider this kicking the can down the road in my motion, I had actually specifically said April 20th council meeting of 2021, being that at that point, in theory, the moratorium, or the cold weather disconnect notices would be, would not be applicable. And possibly with the vaccine and being distributed already, and the theory possibly the moratorium of the opportunity to, or having, not requiring disconnect at that point, which is also makes it a fair playing field because if the moratorium for disconnecting electricity for WWLC is lifted because of COVID being gone, if you will, and we don't know that, this is just, that's why I'm moving it till April, when we can review it again. But it would also mean that the moratorium for landlords to be able to evict people for non-payment would be lifted. And so I'm thinking that makes it a more fair playing field. And the other thing, Mr. Kellogg and I, in theory, I agree with everything you're saying. I just don't know that, at this point, we've still been proven that the only other option is to raise the rates. I understand that's where they're coming from, and it's possible it could. But it's also based on the COVID moratorium. So I'm not doing, I agree, if we're raising everybody's rates because there's a small percentage that don't pay their bills, I'm a problem with that, too. I don't want to pay somebody else, I don't want my rates raised. But I need more evidence that that's the only option. Thank you.
Jay?
Thank you. I guess I would like to say I agree with Mr. Kellogg. I think we've, this process started, what, in September? We've had September, October, November. I think in all fairness to everybody involved with this, it's time to make a decision so whoever it is can start putting their plan together. I guess with that being said, anybody that is zoomed in waiting to speak, I would, I would gladly yield some time to anybody that's interested.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep, I was going to just ask if you wanted to speak.
What was that?
I was just going to ask if you wanted to speak.
I'm not going to add too much to it, but I agree with what Mr. Kellogg has been saying, so.
Okay, thank you. How about Jake? Did you have anything?
I would just say, I agree with what Mr. Venamin said. I do think this should be held before the election so that the current council could determine the decision on this matter.
So I guess my question is, the motion is to table this until April 21st? So I'm wondering if we should rule on this motion? Because if we give everybody that's online to speak, we're just, it's really not relevant to the motion on the floor to, to table this or not. And so unless you think they might have something that's going to add to it that might cause you to want to vote a different direction on tabling it.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, sir.
If I may?
Go ahead, Tom.
From my, from my standpoint, I vote against that we, I vote against tabling it, and I vote that we take action this evening.
Okay.
Are we allowed to comment, Mr. Mayor?
Um, so that's what we're just trying to figure out, because the motion is to table it. So if there's, if the council wants to recognize anybody to discuss the motion on tabling it, not on, not on the ordinance itself, I guess, if I'm correct, so.
Right, I was going to comment that actually, I think the, the motion is really to postpone to a definite time. If you're tabling something, you don't have a specific time to table it. You might not ever take it back up. So I think really what, what your motion, which is, would be debatable then, which you are debating, is a motion to postpone to a, to a definite time. I think maybe with unanimous consent, that could be recognized as what the motion was as opposed to a tabling. Tabling would be if you, that you don't have a specific date to take it back up. You might not ever take it back up. You might just set it aside and, and never come back. And I'm assuming that that isn't what you want. You want to postpone it to a definite time so that you, you do want to take it back up again.
Dean, is that your intent?
My motion was to table it, but Mr. Katna did bring up a point that I didn't take into consideration. That would be after a new council was in place, right? April 20?
That would be that meeting. Well, that's correct. That would be a new council.
That would be a new council. Then, if you will, I'd like to amend my motion to the previous March date, then.
And is your motion to postpone it till then?
To table the discussion until then, yes, to postpone and table the discussion, and then bring it back up, and then whatever, I don't have the calendar in front of me, but the third Tuesday in, in March, when we'll have a better feel for what's going on with the pandemic and knowing that a certain date that will be not weather-related anymore.
So it's March 16th?
Yes.
And that moratorium, I'm pretty sure, is still in place for Water and Light because of the weather?
Yeah, but we'll know when that ends.
Okay.
We'll know when that ends. We'll be able to base a decision.
Okay.
I just wonder why, I can't, I don't, I can't, we have that's enough to do something this evening.
Yeah, so I, let's, so we have a motion on the floor, and I guess I'm looking for unanimous consent. So the, so I'm looking for unanimous consent to change the motion to postpone this item until March 16th council meeting.
If it's unanimous, I disagree.
But this is just to change the motion, it's not voting on the motion. Because there was one already on the floor, so.
So I'm just asking if everybody agrees to changing the motion.
Well, you do unanimous consent, and then if there's no objection, then it's, then it changes. That's why he's trying to get unanimous consent. And if there aren't any objections, otherwise you'd have to take a vote to go through, to go through it, so.
Correct. So, so I'm looking to see if there's any objections to having unanimous consent, to changing the motion, to postponing this item until March 16th, 2021.
I object.
Okay. So then we would-
Then I'll leave the April motion on.
Okay. Or, or, okay.
How would we do that? I'm sorry.
Well, so, okay, so what's on the floor now is, is the motion to table until April, right? So what I suggested is, in terms of more of a point of order, that I think the correct motion would be to postpone it to a certain, a time certain, because you can't, you don't table something with a certain date. So I'm suggesting that the motion would be postponed to a certain date. And, you know, I guess it seems like that date maybe should, wanted to be changed to March. So if someone wants to, there wasn't unanimous consent. So if someone wants to have a vote on that, though, to postpone to March, you're just voting on changing the motion, not voting on, on the motion itself. Otherwise, we're going back to table until April, which I'm saying is really not an appropriate motion. You, you don't table something to a date certain.
So I could, so can I, Jill, can I withdraw the motion and re-enter it as March, then?
Well, you know, you can't withdraw the motion. The motion is, is with the body. The body has to do that.
Okay.
We were trying to do that through unanimous consent, but there was an objection. So if someone wants to make a motion to, you could make another, a motion to change your motion, and then we'd have a vote on it.
Okay. I make a motion to change my motion to-
Postpone it to March 16th?
To postpone it till March 16th, was?
Correct.
March 16th, 2020.
So we have a new motion. So we'll take a voice vote, or, let's do a voice vote.
What was the date?
Um, March 16th, so that'd be the March council meeting.
Okay.
Um, so we have a motion on the floor to change, to postpone, to change the motion to postpone this item until March 16th.
This, this vote is merely to get the wording on what you're going to vote on regarding a postponement. It's not to postpone it.
Correct. We're just agreeing that we're going to change the original motion to this motion.
You're just changing the original motion.
And then we have to vote on that motion again.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay.
Second.
No problem. So we have a motion.
Yeah, or if somebody did.
Yep, so we need a second on the motion to postpone.
Second.
Joe, beat ya, but thank you, Jake. So any further discussion on the motion to change the first motion to postpone this until March 16th? Okay, seeing none. Please cast your ballots.
No.
Okay, Tom. Um, and Jake?
Aye.
Aye. So the motion carried four A's, three N's. So the new motion on the floor currently is to postpone this item to March 16th. Is there any further discussion on that motion? And do you wish to recognize anybody to talk about the motion to postpone and not the ordinance?
Can we talk about why we shouldn't vote tonight? We're just talking about March 16th.
Yep, so let's talk about, so the motion currently on the floor is to postpone to March 16th. So, Tom, if you have some discussion, go ahead.
I just think we should make a decision tonight. We have all the information we need. We don't need anything more. The pandemic is there. It's here. The pandemic has not been the driving force of what's going on. That's been a cop out of what's happening. So I just think we should vote tonight, up or down, and that's what it is. I think we have to stand on our two legs and do that, so.
Okay. Thank you, Tom. Correct. Yep. Any further discussions or your thought about recognizing anybody? Go ahead, Mr. Bemke.
So I have a question. If this motion fails, can we go back to the original?
Yep.
Okay, I guess then at, I guess at this time, I don't have a problem recognizing anybody that wants to speak. But being known that this is their opportunity, their one opportunity, so I'll recognize anybody that wants to or yield my time, too.
So I see Kevin White has his hand up. How much time do you want to give everybody? Couple, three minutes? Three? Go back. Okay. So I'm going to go through, and if nobody objects, I'll recognize or call out the people that want to speak. But you just got to keep it to whether or not we're postponing it. Because if it gets voted down, then we'll be discussing the ordinance, and you might want to save their discussion for that, too. If that makes sense. Oh, so, okay, so I guess Mr. Bemke said this is the one shot, so.
This is my one.
Yep. Right. Okay. So do you want participants to speak? Go ahead, Joe.
I would just say if it passes, we're going to have to discuss it in April.
Correct.
If it doesn't, then they might want to talk then. Rather than waste, you know, rather than waste their three minutes on whether or not we should postpone it, because I believe that's what the conversation has to be limited to.
Correct.
I mean, the outcome of this vote, I guess.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. So I'm going to go kind of through the list if you want to talk about postponing this. I will start with Kevin, if you wish to speak now.
I'll prefer to speak on the next one if we only have one shot.
Well, I think that was a discussion that there are two separate motions potentially. So it could be two different discussions, if I'm correct?
Well, if I am limited to speaking about postponing, then I would prefer to wait until after this motion is voted on.
Sounds good. Thank you, Kevin. Mike?
I'd prefer to speak if they're going to vote on the actual ordinance or whatever, but I do want to make one comment on postponing. I have a hearing difficulty. I wear a hearing aid. Some of you I'm hearing crystal clear, some of you I'm not. And that's why I would support, in favor. I'd like to be there in person to be able to hear better, but that's all I want to say about the motion that's on the floor. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thanks, Mike. JR?
I would like to wait until we have the discussion on the ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Sue or Gary?
We will wait until we have the discussion on the ordinance.
Okay, thank you. How about, I guess Jeff or Jim have anything they want to add?
I will wait until the next round.
Okay, thank you. So I see no further discussion. I guess the resters. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just say what our, what's on the agenda is a second reading of an ordinance that would authorize the Water Works and Lighting Commission to place delinquent electric buildings as special charges on the property tax roll. That's where we should be tonight. That's what we should be talking about tonight. That's what's on the agenda. That's why at times I do get excited at times, but that's what the agenda says.
Go ahead.
That's the second reading. That's the second reading of it. And we should have the second reading of what's there. Then I think if somebody wants to have discussion on it, then I guess maybe there can be discussion on it. But the second reading of that is what should be there. We don't make things up as we go along. The agenda says what it says. That's why the agenda is there. And that's why at times I get excited at things, but that's what the agenda says. Second reading should be read, and then we go from there.
To you.
Well, right, the motion to postpone it is a subsidiary motion. I mean, obviously, the main motion, or the main consideration would be a second reading. All of our ordinances require two readings. And the word, if I could finish.
Hold on, Tom. Let her finish.
And so I guess the word "reading," technically, ordinances are presented in the agenda. And so are you saying we actually have to read it, and then we can go forward? Or, I mean, it's a perfectly fine motion to consider postponing a matter or making amendments to, you know, the main motion. So I guess I'm, I'd be inclined to advise the mayor that it's perfectly fine for us to continue with the subsidiary motion of postponing this to a definite time.
Thank you. Tom? Go ahead.
Oh, and that's my thing, is that the agenda is for the second reading of it. And I guess where we go from there, if that would be passed or whatever, that's what happens. But the second reading is to be there. It's not necessarily debate over to start with delaying this or whatever. The second reading should be there. That's what should have been first.
Thank you. Dean?
Well, I think in effect, isn't that what my motion is, to postpone the second reading?
Correct.
So that's what I've moved. I've moved to postpone that reading. So, and there's a second on the floor, so. At that point, I would think we'd vote for it and move on, but.
Sounds good. Seeing no further discussion. You ready? We're aware of the motion to postpone to March 16th. Please cast your ballots. Tom?
No.
And Jake?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion failed five to two. So we're back to the original item of, as Mr. Royo said, is the second reading of the ordinance would authorize Water and Light Commission to place delinquent electric bills as a special charge on the property tax roll. So regarding that, I'd entertain a motion. Oh, just hold on for the clerk. Okay. Give me a minute here. We'll let the clerk catch up. Okay, thank you. So I think the next appropriate thing would be to entertain a motion.
I would make a motion that we authorize the Water Works and Lighting Commission to place delinquent electric buildings as a special charges on the property tax roll.
We have a motion by Tom, seconded by Scott Kellogg. I'll start with the discussion by council, and then I'll go to the online viewers, if that's what your wishes are. Go ahead, Joe.
I'll be very brief. I was only able to return maybe half the calls I got on this, and I apologize for that. But I talked to a few today, a couple yesterday. Hopefully you can hear me. Water Works and Lighting is, they sent us an email, too, I believe, that outlined some of the things they were willing to do. And I discussed with some of you, but, and I believe it's already read. I don't know if I need to reread it. I would be curious if there's a way, if new service comes into a property or if it changes name, if there's a way that the property owner can be notified when that happens. One property owner told me that he got a bill for a tenant he never rented to, whether it was a fake name. It might be hard. I guess, I don't know, maybe they can just check GIS. I don't know. I guess I would like to see that happen. But I did like some of, I did like Water and Light's efforts here that they've made over these past several months.
Jeff Kuhn is online from Water and Light. If you have any questions you want to direct towards him regarding that.
Yeah, would, Jeff, if I could just ask you, can you notify the property owner whenever new service comes in or there's a name change or anything?
Yes, we currently do that now on both instances. If it's a name change or if it's a new service, somebody going into one of a landlord's properties.
Okay, and it doesn't just go to the property where the service is? It actually goes to the property owner?
It goes to both, yes.
Oh, thank you.
Any other council members, Tom or Jake?
I'm good.
Okay. I just want to double-check. So are your wishes for me to go down the list for landlords? If that works? Okay. Yep, so I'm going to go through, I see your hands raised. I'll go through each person like I did before and give you your three minutes. I'll maybe give you a 10-second warning when you're getting close to three, if you get that far. Go ahead, Kevin.
All right, I'd like to share my screen if it works.
Yes, we can see it.
Do you see a letter?
Yes.
See a letter with a highlighted?
Yes.
Highlighted text? Okay. All right, good. So this is the letter that was put in the City Times from Jim Brown, who's general manager of Water and Light. All of the items that I've highlighted, in my opinion, are either actually incorrect or misleading. Starting with the first section here, Water and Light respectfully declines any further committee meetings. This letter was put in last week. So this really doesn't have any context, because I think what they're objecting to was in-person meetings. So I don't know why the letter wasn't updated. Certainly, Water and Light is here tonight, and they have been here for all of the virtual meetings. Secondly, and I'll show you what I mean by this. Presently, past due balances for electric, water, and sewer are in excess of $1 million. That has not been the case since around October 15th. I will bring up the packet from the December 9th meeting of Water and Light. This is from their details. If we look at $1 million, the last time it was over $1 million was around October 15th. It has gone down. Now, I understand, as they noted, that there was amounts written off here, and that's part of the reason it's gone down. But I think that when we publish things, we should try to be accurate. I've heard that number again tonight, and I think that it's overstated based on what has been saying, what's been proved. Quickly, we do not know, and I would have a question for Water and Light as to what the typical amount would be. This whole section here about landlords have been increasing electric rates for many years. I think that's very unfair. There may be some landlords that do not manage things properly, but this is just, I just object to this type of language. I think that over the last seven years, five years I've been president of the local area landlord association, we've really reached out to Water and Light. We tried to partner with them. They've done a lot for us. We've worked well together. To be, you know, singled out as a section of.
Kevin, just to let you know, you're almost out of time.
Okay. I just object to that, and then.
You're at zero seconds now. Sorry, Kevin, you ran out of time.
Can I make one more comment?
Really quick.
I just did some research on the Manitowoc utility. They are around the same size. They, we called them, they actually were surprised that Water and Light would try and do this during COVID. They were very surprised. They just seem to have a different culture. And I just wanted to note that I would, I think it would be best if Water and Light to change their culture at the top, and I will definitely be pursuing that personally.
Thank you, Kevin. I think, I think next was, let me get my screen back. I think Mike Zerflu was next.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. First off, when Alderman Kellogg spoke about landlords having the right to disconnect, that's only in the new ordinance. I believe that Water and Light is allowing us to do that. We are not allowed to try to disconnect for the water and sewer. The minimum I would hope if you guys approve this today, as you pass this, if you pass this, is that you demand that Water and Light also allows us to have it disconnected for water and sewer when they become delinquent. The main reason why is there's always a moratorium for six or seven months that you can't disconnect electric, yet the water, they choose to run up. It's also very misleading. Here's the other question I have. Water and Light also serves Grand Rapids and other municipalities. What's going to happen there? Are they allowed to tax roll them in Grand Rapids and whatever other municipalities? I can't imagine they are, and isn't that unfair, too, then? I mean, we're choosing just city-owned utilities or the taxpayers in the city? That's discriminating against the properties in Grand Rapids. Also, they say a million dollars right now, that million-dollar number comes around a lot. How much of that is water and sewer that they already taxed around us? My guess is it'd be over 50% because they let that run up. Also, I'd like to know, which I've done an open letters request to Jim Brown. I've done it by email. I've done it by mail. I also personally delivered it. And this started on November 4th, I believe it was, so over 40 days with no response. One of the things I'd like to know is what is the profit that Water and Light makes every year? I mean, maybe it's time, we need to look at the upper management at Water and Light, because they're not trying to work with us. I've tried to work with Water and Light for many years. I used to go to their meetings. They'd allow you to speak. And then they made it where you couldn't even speak at the meetings because of me. And that's not right. I was always treated them professionally and with respect. So I appreciate, I'm encouraging the council to vote this down. If you're going to vote for it, I would request a minimum of an amendment where they allow us to request a disconnect for water and sewer, too, when it's delinquent. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mike. Let's try to remember to stick on topic. JR is up next.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. As the council considers tax rolling this ordinance, I'd like our leaders to consider the following. Why should the landlords be 100% responsible? Why should the landlords be 100% responsible for the losses of running the, the utility? And when we're already covering the water and sewer losses, which represent 25% of their gross revenue? I think that's a, I think a question that really is, is worth looking at. Also, if they, if the tenant isn't paying the utility bills, and Alderman Kellogg talked about, you know, this is a business. Yes, running a utility company is also a business, and every business has some losses. And right now, the utility companies' losses for delinquent utilities represent less than 3% of their gross revenue. And 25% of those gross revenues are covered with being able to tax roll the water and the sewer. Like many other businesses, the insurance companies, medical providers, all of those. And the losses are built into operating that business. You improve on business practices, and the losses are spread over all of the people that are using that service. And in this case, that's all of the people that are receiving the utility. So I would ask that our leaders consider all that and not just make this a shift. Instead of everybody participating, we are already participating and covering those delinquent water and sewer charges. I would also make one last comment, and that's that I'm a small business owner. I have four or five rental properties. I have never had a utility bill that was not paid on a property that I own, even if I had to pay it. That's something that, that we just don't do, and for that generalization to be made, that this problem is being created by the landlords, I think is very inaccurate, and I think is really kind of a smack in the face for us as local property owners, and also people who are supporting our city. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, JR. Sue or Gary Waiter?
Okay, are you able to hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. In the proposal that the Water and Light said that they would follow, in the first sentence, it says during a normal year. I think we all know that next year is not going to be a normal year, so I don't anticipate the things that they said they would do would happen. There is six months of a moratorium that we would not still be allowed to disconnect, and if somebody would have a $200 bill, times six months, is $1,200. How can we collect enough security deposit to cover something like this? Another business's expenses, along with damages that could happen to us? If we include utilities in the rent, our tenants would no longer be able to get assistance, because that bill has to be suffered. So that isn't gonna help the problem. They say they'll put the past due accounts into the TRIP program, or they'll keep trying to collect for a year and then it goes into TRIP. How can we collect a year later from these tenants if it goes on to our taxes? We have no idea where they're living or how to get in touch with them. If the electric is turned off, and the landlord gets a new tenant into the unit, are there going to be new fees for connecting once again that we're also gonna have to be faced with? A landlord has no say in somebody going on a payment plan. If they go on a payment plan, there's obviously already an issue. So that bill is just gonna keep racking up. And I agree with what JR says. All of us landlords are small business owners. We are all part of the, the income that these businesses in town represent. If we can't afford to do the landlord, be a landlord and have the rental units, how do they expect us to afford to give these businesses our money? We don't have the option to do TRIP for collections.
Sue, you're almost out of time. I wanted to, if you had a closing argument, I'd make it.
Yeah, you're just, you're targeting one group of people, and it's, it's not right. The, the people that have the bill in their name need to be held accountable.
Okay, you're out of time. Thank you. Let's see, Jeff from Water and Light, did you wanna, did you have anything?
Sure, thank you. Bad debts really aren't a new issue to the utility. They've just really been magnified by the pandemic and our inability to disconnect utility services. In a, in a typical year, the utility writes off over $100,000 in electric debt. A large portion of our bad debt accumulate during the cold weather moratorium, when the utility cannot disconnect electric service. When the moratorium's lifted, some people choose simply to move as opposed to pay for the electricity they consumed. And unfortunately, this really impacts every ratepayer as the bad debt expense is spread to all customers. When you look at the water bill and tax roll that's been mandated by statute for many years, the reason why it's put in place is the utility needs to install and maintain our expensive infrastructure to serve our customers. And the other side of that is we rely on our customers paying their bills to finance that infrastructure. Over the past five years, if you look at the amount of water bill of, that has gone to tax roll, it's been between $10,000 and $20,000 annually. All of those which are less than a half a percent of the water revenue. I really expect, looking at the numbers, you know, again, when we get back to the normal, electric bill and tax roll would trend to the same percentage level of collection if it was approved. And I really want to stress that if this ordinance is passed, the tax roll process would not be the only collection tool used. It'd be the last piece in the multi-step process that's been discussed and we laid out for the council. In a non-pandemic time, Water and Light utilizes utility disconnection as its best collection tool. Since it can't tax through electric balances, Water and Light is likely one of the most aggressive municipal electric utilities in the state when it comes to collections, and to say otherwise is a disservice to the hard work and dedication of this utility's employees. If approved, the utility doesn't intend to send any inactive tenant debt to the Wisconsin Department of Revenue's TRIP program for one year to try to collect from the state tax return. Waiting one year would also allow a tenant to clear up a past due debt if they do attempt to move back into the service territory. Again, thanks for your consideration of this ordinance.
And I see the, thank you, Jeff. I see the rest of the people are city staff. I'm gonna assume you probably don't have anything to contribute. Council, any final discussion? Tom or Jake?
Can I ask one question?
You're, no, the three minutes are up. We, we need to move on, Sue. Oh, I'm sorry, Scott.
Well, just responding to some of the comments. This chart indicates, you can see at the beginning where it's a million, and it goes down, and that's reflective of the effort of the Water and Light to try to get the money. So, I mean, and there is a list, and it's a litany. I didn't read them just to save time, but the common council has the list from Water and Light, or all the things they are doing. And there was one comment made that the profit of Water and Light, they should absorb that. Well, why, why should they? It seems like people are saying, "I don't want to pay and take it out of the profit of Water and Light, and the profit of Water and Light is sustained Water and Light." And then one, one landlord, I think it was JR, talked about small businesses. Yeah, if he has other small businesses, they're gonna be affected, just as these large employees. Like, I, I read them off, Ocean Spray, Aspiris, Wood County Courthouse, Midwest Coal Storage, all of these people are gonna be affected. And, and I said, he, I think there was a, a comment that I misrepresented, that there's one-third of the landlords are not paying, have overdue bills. Two-thirds are paying, and maybe that's JR, you're paying. But the thing is, is that one-third is not. And then I mentioned of all property, all property, not just landlords, that 12% are not paying, and 88% are. And I know we have COVID right now, and next year we'll have something else. But this has been, this case has been for years. This isn't just, all of a sudden, 2020, we're gonna present this. And, and it's a long overdue. And it's just reasonable in my mind that people use electricity to pay the electricity. And landlords are saying they don't use it, why should they pay for it? And I'm saying it's your property, and it's your business, and you're collecting it, and you are benefiting from having that property on your income tax or what have you. So I just wanted to respond to a few of the comments that were made. Thanks.
Thank you, Scott. Any further discussion? Seeing none. The motion is to adopt the ordinance. Please cast your ballots. Mr. Raoum, how do you vote on the motion?
Aye.
Mr. Katna, how do you vote?
Nay.
Motion carried five a's, two nays. Thank you for everybody participating in this process. It was a lot of participation. Moving on to regular business, the next item is consider adoption of the actions of the Planning Commission held December 7th, 2020. And I'll read that report. The Planning Commission met at 4:00 PM on December 7th, 2020 via remote video conferencing. Members present are on file in the clerk's office. The meeting was called to order at 4:02. Approval of the reports from November 16th Plan Commission meeting. That motion was by Fee, seconded by Bemke to approve the reports from the November 16th Plan Commission meeting. Motion carried. Regarding, item two is Plan-20-0994, Verret Real Estate LLP. Request for a sign exception of the 25% to bulk regulations for wall canopy signs and freestanding signs at 2130 A Street South, parcel ID 34-12136. Motion by Bemke, seconded by Burkhardt, to approve that plan from Verret Real Estate LLP. Request for sign exception of 25% to the bulk regulations for wall and canopy signs and freestanding signs at 2130 A Street South, parcel ID 34-12136. Subject to the following conditions. The proposed freestanding sign setbacks should be permitted to be, or shall be permitted to be reduced 25%, but not less than a setback of 3.75 feet from the property line. The proposed wall and canopy signs shall be permitted to increase by 25% in size, but shall not exceed 33 square feet north and south canopy, and 23.71 square feet east and west canopy. The application, C is the application shall obtain all necessary sign and building permits through the Community Development Department. D is all applications in building and zoning standards shall be met regarding the proposed signage. That motion carried 4-0. Tom Bray entered the meeting at this point. Item three is Plan-20-072, Community Development Department. Action on a request to amend the zoning code, Chapter 11 of the Municipal Code, to modify the secondary review requirements for uses. Motion by Bemke, seconded by Fee, to postpone action until January 2021 meeting for Plan-20-0720, Community Development Department. Actions on a request to amend the zoning code, Chapter 11 of the Municipal Code, to modify the secondary review requirements for uses. Motion carried 5-0. Item four was adjournment, motion by Bemke, seconded by Blazer to adjourn. Motion carried 5-0. The meeting adjourned at 5:07 PM. And I see Mr. Kearns is on, should you have any questions? And what are your wishes?
I'll move to approve the report.
We have a motion by Zerflu.
Your voting screen is down.
No problem. Seconded by Kellogg. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. Mr. Raoum, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Mr. Katna?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. That motion carried seven a's, zero nays. Next item is be the standing committees. I got ahead of myself. The first one is the Finance Property Committee held on December 1st. Somebody from Finance able to read that for Mr. Coth? Thank you, Mr. Kellogg.
The Finance and Property Committee meeting met on Tues, I'm gonna speak louder, I'm not yelling, but I want to make sure. Met on Tuesday, December 1st, 2020 at 4:30. All members of the Finance Property Committee were present except for Alder Person Coth. Alder Person Bemke sat in for Alder Person Coth. Also in attendance were Alder Person Veneman, Mayor Blazer, Tim DeZarcey, and Chief Young. It was, the meeting was called to order by Alder Person Kellogg at 3, 4:33. Number two, consider request from 2411 A Street Incorporated, Agent A2Z Mini-Mark Azarden Pathen Agent for a Class A beer and a Class A liquor license for their premises located at 2411 A Street South. It was moved by Kellogg and seconded by Kubushek to approve the Class A beer and the Class A liquor license for 2411 A Street Incorporated Agent A2Z Mini-Mark Azarden Pathen Agent for the premises located at 2411 A Street South. Motion carry. Consider a request from Out-of-the-Box Coffee House LLC Agent, Out-of-the-Box Coffee House Teresa Cashman Agent for the Class B beer and a Class B liquor license for their premise located at 3820 A Street South. It was moved by Kellogg and seconded by Kubushek to approve the Class B beer and the Class B liquor license for Out-of-the-Box House LLC Agent, Out-of-the-Box LLC House for the premises located at 3820 A Street South. Consider the request from ECO ATM LLC Agent Hunter Bjorkman Agent located at 4331 A Street South for renewal of a secondhand article dealer license. It was moved by Kellogg and seconded by Bemke to approve the secondhand article dealer license to ECO ATM LLC Agent, ECO ATM for the premise located at 4331 A Street South. Motion carry. Consider a request from E-Ways Sales LLC Agent, E-Ways Sales, Jonathan Ruder Agent located at 2660 A Street South, number 105, for renewal for a pawnbroker secondhand article dealer and secondhand jeweler dealer license. It was moved by Kellogg and seconded by Bemke to approve the renewal of the pawnbroker secondhand article dealer and secondhand jewelry dealer license to E-Ways Sales LLC Agent LLC- to E-Way Sales LLC Agent, LLC Sales Jonathan Ruder Agent for the premises located at 2660 A Street South, number 105. Motion carry. Consider request from GameStop Incorporated Agent, GameStop number 3254, James A. Bell Agent located at 930 Coon Avenue for a renewal of a secondhand article dealer license. It was moved by Kellogg and seconded by Bemke to approve the secondhand article dealer license to GameShop Incorporated Agent, GameShop number 3254, James Bell Agent for the premises located at 930 Coon Avenue. Motion carry. Seven, renew and consider approval options for the fire station number one and number two renovation. It was moved by Kellogg and seconded by Kubushek to approve proceeding with station one renovation option D and station number two option A for the cost of $2,341,577. Motion carry. There was the audit of the bills. It was moved by Kubushek and seconded by Bemke to approve check number 6,174 to 6,522. Motion carry. They will set the date for the next meeting. The next regular scheduled Finance and Property meeting will be Tuesday, January 5, 2021, at 4:30. It was adjourned, a motion by Kellogg and seconded by Bemke to adjourn. Motion carried with the meeting adjourned at 5:30 PM. I so move.
Thank you, Mr. Kellogg, for the motion, seconded by Kubushek. Mr. Desarcey is online. If you have any questions? Any items to be held out?
Could I hold out number seven, please?
Is that fine with the rest of the council? Everybody good? Have to apologize, my Zoom locked up on my computer. So regarding the balance of the report, what is? Actually, we're ready to vote on the motion. Here you go. Okay, we'll hold out. Okay. So the motion is holding out item seven. So please cast your ballots. Kind of got off track there. Tom, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Jake?
Aye.
There we go. Thank you. Motion carried seven a's, zero nays. Mr. Bemke, regarding item seven.
Thank you. So I guess the night that we discussed this in Finance, Chief Young was there. I believe the request was for an expense on a new station. I did see that we got that email, I don't know, sometime earlier this week, but I was just wondering if Chief would like to come up and maybe address this project and the possibility of a new station vice, one versus the other.
All right. So listening to the motion, with that price tag, I don't think the motion was quite accurate. I believe the motion for option D for that price was with the apparatus expansion, and I did not hear that in the motion. I could be wrong. But I believe that was for the $2,341,577 was with the apparatus expansion. And I thought that's what we had agreed to at the last Finance and Property meeting. And the motion did not indicate that. So anyways, I think I sent out at the Finance and Property meeting, it was requested in order to do your due diligence to compare this station addition and the renovation against the cost of a central station, a new fire station one. I believe I sent out the correspondence I got from Five Bugles, and they came with their space needs analysis originally for $23,966. The cost of the station would be roughly $6.5 million, and that is strictly for the construction of a new building. They would say the total project would be $7.5 million for site, site preparation, appliances, fixtures, IT needs. But as you can see in that information they sent, they had other stations. And as you go through a station, the concept of a station, they typically see the stations reducing size. So they also gave another quote for a 20,000-square-foot station. That would come in about $5.5 million with the total project cost roughly of $6.5 million. So I think that gives you some perspective of the addition and the renovation as opposed to a new fire station at this time. The other thing I'd like to point out, if we were to consider a new fire station, that does not address station number two, because I think down the road, there's got to be some planning, what we want to do with station number two. I believe what we're doing to address the restrooms up there, meet our gender equity concerns, but that doesn't address the overall issues with station two. So I think, you know, we're looking to get 12 to 15 years out of that station, but at some point, we would need to replace that station. And I'm a little worried about a new central station, and then in 10, 12, 15 years, we need to come back and build another fire station. So I hope, hopefully that helps address, you know, some of the considerations of a new station versus an addition and a renovation. The other thing I'd like to point out, I'm not sure how, you know, the vote goes, but if we do agree to bond for this and move forward, I would like some direction, how we can move forward. I would like to continue with Five Bugles. They've done the station analysis. They've done the conceptual designs. I think it's time to move on to, if we were to move forward, the design phase of it, the architectural. And I think we need to start moving soon. Ideally, talking with them that it's going to take several months in order to come up with the overall design concept. And I think the sooner we can begin the design and get the architectural design, the goal would be to have a bid ready to take out for bid this spring as opposed to waiting this spring and taking it out for bid, you know, late summer or fall. Their recommendations are with COVID going on, a lot of projects they're seeing right now are coming in under their project estimates. So I think it would be in our best interest to keep this moving forward if we do agree to bond for it tonight. So with that, I don't know if there's any other questions.
Anybody on the council have any questions for Chief Young? Go ahead.
I'm in favor of this concept because I think we need to do it. I visited station one. The only concern I have, though, is this is the first time I heard that you have concern about station two. I mean, I guess, what are your concerns with station two? I know we're making some modifications on the second floor, but what, I guess, what's going, what do you expect? I guess I have a concern because Public Works want a new garage, and we have other expenses down the road. What's the next shoe that might drop with regard to station two? That's all.
Station two is nearly 50 years old. It's old, it's inefficient. The apparatus bay is small. We are extremely limited on our options as far as construction and additions just due to the construction of the station itself. I'm just putting it out there that there needs to be some long-term planning that I, realistically, I think in 10 to 15 years, you probably can make it longer in there. But I think a plan needs to be considered for station two. That's why I think it's the responsible thing to do, instead of looking at a new fire station and a new construction of a central station or station one, that we do the addition and the renovation, and planning can begin for station two. Because I think what we're looking at, station two, sets us up for hopefully 15 years, maybe longer. And maybe at that point, we can come out and look at some more, you know, remodeling or renovations at station two. But we do know there's asbestos. The floors are in this, made out of asbestos. Building on and the addition on there is very limited, and it's just getting old, and it's an inefficient station. You know, that'll put that station out to 65, 70 years old in 10 to 15 years.
I was just curious.
Any other council members? Go ahead, Bemke.
I have a couple more questions. I guess one is $2.3 million project. I was not on the council when this, I'm guessing this started. It started because of the situation with locker rooms and the sleeping quarters. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah. Gender equity, locker rooms, sleeping arrangements, restrooms.
Right down the list. I saw, you know, I think the mayor said that the station's one step above Deer Camp. I don't disagree with them. But I'm just curious how we went from locker rooms and sleeping quarters to administrative rooms, meeting rooms. And I think you touched on it before. Have you looked at a long-range plan? And is this part of the long-range plan? And I guess I'll let you answer that, but I do have one more question. Have you looked into the possibility of any grants for this?
Well, our AFG grants and the grant opportunities for fire station, new fire stations are limited. So when we look at our AFG grants, stations are not a possibility. It's for equipment and safety. I have not, in the, since I've been deputy chief and chief, I have not seen any AFG grants on the fire FEMA side that goes to the construction of new fire stations since probably 2011. So I don't know where else I would look for grants. How we got to option D as opposed to option B, which kind of was a little more in scope with the dorms and the restrooms, was we were looking at one point, I don't know what it was in here, 1.4 million, so about 400 more thousand. We are meeting the needs. It's not a Band-Aid. It's not a five-to-10-year fix. We believe the option D sets us up for 20 to 30 years on that station before you need to look at a new one. At some point down the road, is it possible in that 20 to 25-year range when station two needs to be addressed? And station one is, you know, we're getting to that 25, 30-year life of this addition and renovation is a time to look at one main station. And maybe that would be the way to go. So there has been some planning on this. It meets our, this bonding meets station two's issues over there, and it meets station one's. And for an extra $400,000, $500,000, it addresses all of the needs as opposed to being a Band-Aid. And I think that's how we ended up with option D.
Thank you.
I know we have Mike Lizitsa and Derek Maticowski online from the Fire Department. I don't know if anybody wanted to recognize us, see if they wanted to speak.
If they want to speak, I'll recognize them.
Okay. Mike Lizitsa, do you have anything you'd like to add? Sorry if I caught you off guard.
Sure. Everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
I just want to start by saying thank you to the city, Wisconsin Rapids, the city council members, the leadership within the department for listening. We formulated a plan and hopefully approving what is a much-needed building renovation. Over my 20 years, I will say that many, if not most, of our updates were done by our own members. I do, over that time, we have had an ever-changing fire department in terms of staffing, vehicles, training, diversity, and now even in a pandemic. We have asked for very little during this time in terms of capital improvements. With these changes, we've recognized that we have some much-needed updates in terms of our facilities. All of our deficiencies and liabilities have been identified. Now it's time for a solution, I believe, to overcome these challenges. I hope you can see the liabilities that are before us, and we'll approve the renovation that's in front of you. I truly feel that this investment is necessary and has, and I believe that all the council members that have toured our station believe that also. I guess, thank you for listening, and hopefully we'll be in the works here.
Thank you, Mike.
Hi, Derek Maticowski. I also, you know, Lieutenant at the Fire Department, but I'm also the president of the local 425er Union. And I think, you know, lots changed when this whole concept first went to, into, you know, with the previous administration of the city. Back, at that point, we only had one female firefighter. We now currently have two female firefighters, and we're also dealt with a pandemic of a magnitude that, you know, no one would have expected. I think it was very eye-opening to see how inadequate our facilities are for now with social distancing and downtime areas for members. I think, you know, it would have been, it would have been ideal, you know, 10 years ago, to have a plan for a new facility, but obviously that didn't happen. And I think financially for the city, the option of the renovation, which I have a lot of confidence in Five Bugles and their architectural designs, that this is going to be the best option for the amount of money being spent. And I'm not only speaking as a firefighter and the union president, but I'm also speaking as a taxpayer. I mean, would I love to see a new station? Absolutely. But when you're talking about bonding that much money for that many years on our, you know, on our current tax base, you know, as a taxpayer, I can see the hardship, you know, that side of it, too. For like, to echo what Mike Lizitsa said, that, you know, first of all, I am appreciative of everything that the city is doing and looking at this, but for those of you that have toured our facilities, we don't even have adequate space for all our membership, let alone all our vehicles and our administrative stuff. It's, it's, it's very clustered there. It's very confined. It's just outdated. So I guess I am speaking in favor of pushing forward with this renovation project, and I hope to have the support of the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Derek. I guess we don't have a motion yet. Tim, maybe you could help out? Because we're not technically making a motion to approve bonding. So would the motion be for the next step, do you think? Or just kind of looking for your thoughts?
Yeah. I guess that the motion be to proceed with option B. I do believe that's what was approved in the minutes. And then obviously, in early this 2021, I'll be bringing back a resolution to approve the bonding for this project, but also the public works construction projects that were in the budget. So, and in conjunction with that, I will have a budget amendment that includes this project.
Thank you. So proceed would be to the next step of construct or design, or?
Right. I think, I think that's a discussion that Chief Young and I have to have as far as how we want to proceed with the design bid phase of this project. And we'll probably be bringing that back at the January Finance meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor, if I, Mayor, if I may just say something?
Yes, please. Go ahead, Tom.
I hope that we take a good, hard look at, I'm in favor of improving this. I hope we take a good, hard look at what we can do that's going to make this last 20, 30 years from now so we don't have to come back in 10 years from now, ask for more. Let's do it right the first time. Sometimes we have to bite the bullet to get it done. So let's take a good, hard look at what really we need for the next 20, 30, and 40 years. And that includes station two. Let's take a good, hard look at what we really want to do, and then let's decide what we can do. We have to look at it all, take a good, hard look at it. We have to look at it all, take a good hard look at it. The guys that work there know what it is. Stations were great probably when they were built. Times have changed a lot. So let's take a good hard look at, make sure we do it right, not just piecemeal. Let's do it right, right, right the first time, so we don't have to come back in 10 years to look at asking for more. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Jake, did you have anything you want to add?
I did not.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor.
Good.
I guess I just have a question. So what are we approving tonight? Are we approving, pushing the plan forward and coming up with a plan, is that what we're looking to do? We're not approving any money? I mean, without a plan, it's pretty hard to say what it's going to cost, right?
No, I think their cost projection is on-
It's an estimate though, right?
Based off of square footage and what it costs. And that's why I think it's important that we keep this moving, because everything I'm hearing right now from them, that they're coming overbid just due to the COVID and a lot of these companies that do municipal construction are not very busy right now. So I think it would really benefit us to keep this project moving and get the design project moving forward and get this out to bid as soon as we can. I thought tonight we were actually approving the bonding, so, but I look forward to working with Finance Director DeSorci and coming up with the plan to move forward. One thing I want to say is, I, you know, you look at this and there's a lot of members that would like to see a new station, and I think Finance Director DeSorci mentioned it, it would have been great to build a city hall 10 years ago when they did the remodeling, but fiscally responsible, I don't think it's there. I am very confident that this addition that was approved at finance last meeting, and we're doing it right with the apparatus expansion on here immediately, and we're bonding for it, so we don't have to come back in 10 years and we need to now add on to the apparatus room. I am confident in Five Bugles and discussing with them that this is going to get us 25, 30 years. And it's pretty much, you know, it won't be the same space as what they recommended at a new station, but it's going to be a new station within the square footage that we have. It's going to be, it's going to meet our needs for many, many years. And in station two, I'm confident too that our members like it over there, they bid to get over to station two. So there's nothing wrong with station two in the immediate future. Our members like it, there's enough space there, it's big enough, it's just when you're looking at 10, 15 years from now, you're like, it's going to be a 75 year old station. So I think there needs to be some long-term planning, you know, what we want to do with that eventually too. But this definitely buys us the time we need.
Thank you. Ben?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Bemke, I think what, we're not committing ourselves because we're in the infancy stages of this as far as procedure goes. What will happen is that we would approve the design, go through the design phase, and then even if we approve bonding, if we authorize, because that has to happen, but ultimately if it goes out to bid and it comes back at, I'll use round number $5 million. We don't have $5 million budget for it, we don't have an interest in wanting to spend $5 million. We don't have to accept the bid. Now, if we accepted the bids and then didn't go with the lowest responsible bidder, that's a problem, but we can make the decision, if the bids come back very unfavorable, we, we could go back to the drawing board. So by, by an approval tonight, it isn't going to commit us to do anything, really. It's going to create the design phase of this and take us to the bid letting process. So the question is, is are we actually, is this something where it satisfies the requirements of where we're at? You know, I don't know if that kind of helps out at all, but it, yeah, we are not committing a single dollar specifically to the project, but now there is going to be a cost to the design. Obviously Five Bugles is not going to do the design phase and the bidding for free. But that would have been kind of almost nice to have that figure that we would be approving, or is it in there? Am I missing something?
That's in there, the architectural-
That is in there. Okay. So then, yeah, we would be authorizing Five Bugles to take it to the next.
Go ahead, Tim.
Yeah, I would just like to kind of clarify, and it's just kind of like with the whole, you know, budget adoption, you know, the whole bonding. You know, we have projects in the adopted 2021 budget that are financed with debt proceeds. And none of those are finalized until the council approves the actual issuance of the debt. So, you know, even though that you approve a 2021 budget, it's not until you approve the resolution authorizing the issuance of debt that those projects are funded with those debt proceeds. So depending perspective, this project, we're saying, okay, we're proceeding with option B. I think that Chief Young and I will work to bring back a proposal from Five Bugles, hopefully by the next finance committee that says for design. And then depending on how long it takes them to do that, design bid documents and stuff like that, we'll be bringing back a proposal to accept the bid for the renovations. And as part of that, we'll be approving a resolution sometime in early 2021 to approve the financing of that, which would include this project as well as the street construction projects that are in the 2021 adopted budget.
Thank you, Tim. So I'm going to make an assumption here that probably the motion should somewhere be around authorizing the next step to the design phase?
Right.
Or?
I think the appropriate motion is to proceed with option B, but obviously we'll be bringing back a motion to, or action by the finance committee and council to, for the bid documents. And ultimately, this will go out to bid because it is public construction, and at that point we'll approve the final bid for that.
So I think the correct motion should have option B with apparatus bay and option for station one and option A for station two.
We're talking D as in dog, correct?
Oh, I'm sorry, I misspoke.
Yeah, it's D.
D, okay. I'm sorry, so option D with-
With the apparatus expansion and, yeah, option A, station two.
What are your wishes, Council?
I'll make a motion to approve proceeding with station number one renovation, option D as in dog, and station number two, option A. Added cost-
And station D with the apparatus expansion.
That was station one renovation, option D with the apparatus expansion, and station two, option A as an add-on at a cost of $2,341,577, as recommended by the committee.
So we have a motion by Zerflu, seconded by Kellogg. Any further discussions? Seeing none, please cast your ballot. Mr. Raome?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Katna?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carried, seven As, zero Ns. Next item on our agenda, Mr. Kubasak, public, I'm sorry, Mr. Raome, Public Works Committee meeting December 1st.
Unless you took that away from me. We'll see.
No, sir, it's all yours.
Public Works Committee met on Tuesday, December 1st, 2020 via remote video conference. Jay Katna, Dean Veneman, and Scott Kellogg filled in for myself, they were present. Others attending are in file in clerk's office. Item one was called a meeting to order, the meeting was called to order at 6:04 PM. Item two, review the DPW report. Report was reviewed and is available on the city website. Number three, review and consider modifying traffic control at Two Mile Avenue and 10th and 16th Street to an all-way stop. Motion by Veneman, seconded by Katna to modify traffic control at Two Mile and 16th Street to an all, all-way stop. That motion carried three to zero. Number four, parking changes at the following locations. A, Saratoga Street between East Jackson Street and Fifth Street North. B, Dewey Street between Sixth Street South and Eighth Street South. C, Dewey Street between Fifth Street South and Lincoln Street. And D, Lee Street between Sixth Street South and Eighth Street South. So the motion by Kellogg, seconded by Veneman to approve the proposed parking changes, the motion carried three to zero. Item five, preliminary resolution on Fremont Street between 14th Avenue North and 13th Avenue North, proposed for the 2022 construction season. Number six, preliminary resolution on Fremont Street between 10th Avenue North and 7th Avenue North, as proposed to 2022 construction season. Item seven, preliminary resolution on 9th Avenue North between McKinley Street and Fremont Street, proposed in the 2022 construction season. There's a motion by Katna, seconded by Kellogg to approve the preliminary resolutions for Fremont Street between 14th Avenue North and 13th Avenue North, Fremont Street between 10th Avenue North and 7th Avenue North, and 9th Avenue North between McKinley Street and Fremont Street. That motion carried three to zero. Item eight, review One Mile Creek project scope. There's a motion by Katna, seconded by Kellogg to place this item on the referral list. That motion carried three to zero. Item nine, review the referral list. The list was reviewed. Item 10 was to adjourn, there's a motion by Kellogg, seconded by Katna to adjourn, the motion carried three to zero. The meeting was adjourned at 6:50 PM. And with that, Your Honor, I move for adoption of the report.
Thank you, Mr. Raome. We have a motion by Raome.
Second.
Voting board? Seconded by Mr. Veneman. Any further discussion?
Uh, yes. This is from Katna, I would like to hold out item number six, please.
Everybody good with that? Any objections?
Did he say six?
Yes, item number six.
Wouldn't, I'm just wondering, wouldn't it actually be seven? I don't think there was action taken on six. So I- I mean, seven was the action on-
Oh.
On all of them, is all I'm saying, wouldn't that be the? Is that what you wanted, Jake?
Would that be correct, item seven?
So my concern, and I brought this up at the committee meeting, is that with the church and the school there, with the special assessment that's going to happen for this, and this question wasn't answered, it's supposed to be looked into, are they going to be getting a special assessment built for this? Are they tax exempt? What is going to happen with this and the access to the school and the church?
Should we hold out the item and then have a discussion?
Yep.
So we'll hold out. We'll hold out item six and item seven, basically the action regarding item six. Everyone good with that? Okay. Any objections? Seeing none. It's on the balance of the report. Please cast your ballots. Tom?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And Jake?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carried, seven As, zero Ns.
Well, no, they're in the budget.
Regarding item six, seven. Mr. Katna?
Street utilities.
Yeah, again, I would just, I have questions for Mr. Terry, if he's on the phone, just what would be the special assessment to the church and school if, or are they tax exempt? And then what would be their access during this project?
Mr. Terry?
Thanks. So the preliminary resolution just identifies the city's intent to levy special assessments. That's a requirement in accordance with our city ordinances in order to perform any of our rehabilitation projects. So there are no, the tax exempt parcels enjoy city services and special assessments are, you know, imposed on all property within the city. As far as access goes, those types of, those types of items are discussed during the design phase. And so right now, we're looking for the preliminary resolution so that we can get the engineering staff working on survey and design and make sure that their time is spent wisely on projects that the city has on the capital improvement plan and projects that are necessary, rather than speculate on what we may or may not be doing and then have them do a bunch of work and shell it or whatever. So I think a lot of those questions, Jake, would be answered during the design phase. I don't know if that answers what you're, what you're looking for?
Yes, to help. So during the design phase, we would, it would come back and we would get to go through it. So that's, that's what I was wondering, I had a couple of questions from some residents about that, so I just wanted to clarify.
Sure. And in the event, obviously, we have been discussing, and RFP has gone out for review and possibly converting our, our, a street system to a utility. In the event that that happens, the city may wish to amend the intent to use police powers to levy special assessments. So that's, that's something that can happen in the future. It doesn't necessarily lock that project in. It's whatever ordinance is in place at the time that the, you know, that the project's underway or complete. So there are options.
Thank you.
Anyone else, Council? Not, what are your wishes?
Move for adoption.
Thank you, Mr. Raome. We have a motion to adopt, seconded by Mr. Kellogg. Any further discussions? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. Thank you. Mr. Katna? Thank you. Motion carried, seven As, zero Ns. Next, Mr. Kubasak, HR Committee report from December 8th.
Thank you, I just put a candy cane in my mouth. Human Resources Committee meeting, minutes, December 8, 2020, meeting, Human Resources Committee meeting was held Tuesday, December 8 at 4:30 PM. Chairperson Kubasak called the meeting to order at 4:40 PM. All members of the committee were present, Zerflu, Bemke, and Kubasak. Item number two, discuss and consider for approval and extension or reset for 2021 emergency employee paid leave due to the continuing COVID-19 pandemic. Motion by Zerflu, seconded by Bemke, to reset the city's emergency paid leave hours to 80 hours or two week equivalent on January 1, 2021, and to extend the period of time within which to use this city's emergency paid leave to April 1, 2021. Motion carried three to zero. Copy of the revised policy is with the clerk's office. Item number three, discuss and consider for approval, changing the reporting structure for the airport manager position, so the position reports to the mayor. The position currently reports to the director of public works. Motion by Bemke, seconded by Zerflu, to change the reporting structure for the airport manager position from reporting to the director of public works to reporting to the mayor. Motion carried three to zero. Item number four, adjournment, motion by Zerflu, seconded by Bemke, to adjourn, motion carried three to zero. The meeting adjourned at 5:08 PM. And with that, if there's no holdovers or holdouts, I will entertain a motion for approval.
Motion by Kubasak, seconded by Veneman. Any further discussion?
I'd like to hold out item three.
Raome would like to, everyone good with that? Seeing no objection, we'll hold out item three. So we'll take a roll call on the balance of the report. Please cast your ballots. Please cast your ballots. Mr. Rayom?
Aye.
And Mr. Catna?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. Motion carried, seven As, zero Ns. Mr. Rayom, item three, and just to let everybody know, I'm at 10% on my computer, so if you lose me on Zoom, that's why. Go ahead, Mr. Rayom.
And, and I don't have a lot to say about it. I, I spoke against it at the committee meeting, and I think all things are working now, it's how we should keep it. I don't know if anybody else or if Mr. Terry would like to say anything or not, but I intend to vote no on this myself, and that's why I held it out, so.
Thank you. I'm getting a bad charger. It might not be the right one. Okay, we're going to wing it. Any further discussion?
I make motion for approval.
Motion by Kubitschak. Seconded by Kellogg. Sorry about that. Thank you. All right. If there's no further discussion, please cast your ballots. Tom? And thank you. And Jake?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carried, six As and one Nay. Mr. Kubitschak, committee of the whole from December 8th.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Committee of the whole meeting scheduled Tuesday, December 8th, 2020, at 5:00 PM. Let's see, members present, all members were present except Stephen Coath, who was, who was, he was excused from that. Call to order, item number one, call to order. Due to technical difficulties, other person Kubitschak called a meeting to order at 5:25 PM. Item number two, discussion regarding sewer and water utility improvements for the proposed athletic complex at Lincoln. Discuss referral to the finance and property committee regarding the city's participation in those improvements. Motion by Catna, seconded by Veneman, to direct the public works department to work with the stakeholders in this project to provide a project scope and cost estimate for referral to the finance property committee for consideration. Motion carried six Ayes and one Nay, with Rayom voting in the negative. Item number three, discuss an approval of measures to reduce the possible impact of COVID-19. As other person Coath made this referral and was not in attendance at this meeting, no action was taken on this item. Item number four was adjournment. It was moved by Bemke, seconded by Veneman to adjourn. Motion carried seven Ayes and zero Nays. The meeting adjourned at 6:13 PM, and again, if there isn't any holdouts, I'll make the motion for approval.
So, we have a motion by Kubitschak, seconded by Veneman.
Mr. Mayor, I, I'd just like to hold out number two, but I'd just like to make a comment on number three.
Okay, well, if everyone's good with holding out item two, seeing no, no issue, go ahead on your comment. Well, hold out item two and go ahead with your comment on three.
With two, I'm just going to vote against that because of all the discussion that was going on that evening and that, and I'm going to go along with my, what my negative vote was at that point in time, and so I want to continue with that. And so, if you want to have a vote on that one, you can, and then I'd just like to make a comment on three, or?
So, why don't we have you make the comment on three? We'll take, we'll take a vote on the balance of the report, and we'll hold out item two and vote on that. So, go ahead.
Okay. And basically, the discussion and approval, this was from other person Coath, and how things were going that evening is that, and Mr. Coath was not present. I don't believe his referral there had to do with what your proclamation can be or what you can do. His thoughts are is that we have to do better on our home, avoiding masks and that type of stuff, protect ourselves. That's really what it had to do with. It has, it really didn't have anything to do with what your proclamation was or what you could do. It's that we're not out of the woods on this thing. We're not out of the woods with this vaccine. We've got a long ways to go, and it's still people have to practice self-discipline to stay safe. And that's what that really basically had to do with. So, it really, it was not a question of what you could proclaim to do or anything like that, but that it, it had to do with that we have to do whatever we can to stay safe because we have a long ways to go till we're going to be out of the woods of this, if we get out of the woods of this.
Point of order. I think, I think it's inappropriate to put words in someone else's mouth when they're not here tonight.
I won't argue anymore.
Thank you, Mr. Rayom. Ted? Oh, I was going to say, you had your speaking. I didn't know if you wanted to speak. Okay. So, we have a motion to adopt the balance of the report. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots, which I don't think there's really any action, except adjourning. Mr. Kellogg? Uh, Mr. Rayom?
Oh.
Uh, on the balance of the report?
Uh, Your Honor, just confirm we're holding out number two.
Yep, we're holding out two, and then, so we're voting on the balance of the report.
Okay. On the balance of the report. I thought we were voting on two.
Nope, on the balance.
On the balance, I'll vote yes, with my disagreement on number three.
Sounds good. And Mr. Catna? Motion carried, seven As, zero Ns. And, Mr. Rayom, you held out item two. Do you have anything you'd like to add? Tom, do you have anything further you'd like to add regarding item two? Counsel, your wishes?
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion by Zerflu, seconded by Bemke. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. All right, I'll let the clerk catch up. All right, please cast your ballots. Mr. Rayom, would you like to vote? Tom, do you wish to vote on, oh, hold on. Tyler? We have audio issues? Jake, can you hear me? We're having a little technical difficulties, please bear with us.
Your Honor, just, I think, I don't know if there's a way, I think if Mr. Rayom did want to speak to it, he should be allowed to since, seen as the, yeah.
Everyone good with that? Thank you.
I believe we can even still, whatever.
Yeah, let's back all of the vote, unless nothing's been reviewed. All right, everybody back. Mr. Rayom, we lost you, so we, can you hit the on button? Yeah, we lost you.
The whole audio went out.
Yeah, the whole audio went out, so we're back. We have a motion to approve the item, and now we realized, so, Tom, we wanted to give you an opportunity to speak because you wanted to have that item held out. Do we have you, Tom?
Speaking item two?
Yes, item two, the complex.
I'm just speaking against it, that's all. I'm going to vote no, that's all.
Okay, just wanted to give you that opportunity. Jake, since we lost you, did you have anything?
I just wanted to yield any time if there's anybody from the Lincoln Athletic Complex representing on the line right now to speak.
There is nobody here.
Okay.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to approve the item as presented. Seeing no further discussions, please cast your ballots. I'm at 7%. Mr. Rayom, how do you like to vote?
No.
Thank you. And Jake?
Aye.
Thank you. And the motion carried, six As and one Nay. We are to reports of other commissions, commission, or committees, commissions, boards, and department reports. What are your wishes? Uh, we got to wait for the, that's all right. 14.
I'll make a motion to approve all reports.
So, we have a motion by Zerflu and seconded by Veneman. Is there any discussion on those reports? Go ahead.
I just want to-
Microphone. Thank you.
I just want to compliment the police department, the chief, Philman. It seems like the last four, five months, they, they show, the officers have shown significant number of arrests in drugs, and I know about four, three or four years ago, this was a topic that we wanted to have more aggressive arrests in this area, and I think they're, they're doing a phenomenal job, and I sent them an email to that effect, so I just want to echo that email and say, good job. Thanks.
Thank you. They have definitely been working hard. Oop, just lost my computer. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. Mr. Rayom?
Aye.
Thank you. And Mr. Catna?
Aye.
Thank you. That motion carried, seven As, zero Nays. Any referrals to committees?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, if I can?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
This, this might not necessarily be a referral to a committee, but I did have one of my constituents, our landlord, contact me and ask if we could start putting the packet on the website as they're only seeing the agenda, and rather than do a public, or a public records request, they'd access it online.
Is that possible?
So.
With the clerk's side, she will look into that. Is it because of the size or?
Yeah. And we have all of the evidence, we're all, cannot, we have these, so.
Okay, we'll work with IT on that, and we, we agree with you, Jake. Any further referrals? Seeing none, we're to our last item, which is adjournment. We have a motion by, was it Zerflu?
It was me.
Okay. Yeah, that was Zerflu. Uh, is there a second?
Second.
Why, Mr. Kubitschak? He was the loudest. All in favor, or please cast your ballots. I think we usually do a voice vote, but push your buttons. Mr. Rayom, Mr. Catna?
Aye.
Thank you. And Mr. Veneman? Aye, okay. Motion carried. Happy holidays, everybody. Stay safe. Enjoy your family time.